Good morning, Jennifer. I'll have you call roll, please.
Controller Yi, for the State Treasurer, Mr. Brufino.
President.
Mr. Prizant.
Here.
Ms. Higa.
Here.
Ms. Yamamoto.
Here.
Ms. Hendricks.
Here.
Mr. Keely.
Here.
For the Superintendent of Public Instruction, Mr. Yamanaka.
Yes.
And for the Director of Finance, Ms. Whitaker.
Here.
Chairperson Dylan, you have a call.
Thank you, Jennifer. The first thing I'd like to do is take the opportunity to welcome Jennifer Whitaker to the Board and to the DIAS, and William Prizant. William is our new appointee from the Governor's Office, and Jennifer's here for the Department of Finance, so welcome to the Board, guys. We enjoy having you here, I'm sure. All righty, we'll move on to our agenda. It's item number two. Oh, I guess three, sorry. Oh, no. Item number one, we better approve our agenda. And so I entertain a motion to adopt the agenda with flexibility. It's been moved by Joy and seconded by Sharon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Any extensions? We've approved our agenda. All right, now we're on track, right, Brian? Okay, let's move on to item number three then. Approval of the Headquarters' Expansion Financing and Reimbursement Resolutions. Julie, we'll turn this over to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Board. My name is Julie Underwood, Chief Financial Officer, and I'm here today with Mike Kramer from Montague, DeRose and Associates, and he's our Municipal Advisor. And I also have Kevin Savali with Stradling, Yoka, Carlson and Roth as our Disclosure Council. And we have two resolutions before you today that we're asking your approval on related to obtaining bond financing for the Headquarters' Expansion Project. But before we get into the details of the resolution, I wanted to just spend a few minutes speaking about the process and the financing team that we have in place to assist us along the way. So when we first started talking about bonds for this project, I don't think a lot of us realized just how much effort goes into issuing bonds. And I'm sure, as you can see by reading, yeah. I'm sure as you can see by reading today's agenda item, it is very technical in nature. There are six different legal documents that are required that we need to complete just to get to the point where we can issue the bonds for this transaction. But the process itself and these documents are very customary in nature, which is good, that's not unique, unique to us, but not unique to the process. And it's a very standard financing vehicle that's used by many agencies to finance their projects. And we have a team of outside professionals that are helping us all along the way that have experience in issuing bonds. And so I just wanted to take a few moments to introduce them to you. Some of them are here today, and they are here if you have any technical questions during our presentation today. So if I call your name, if you could please stand up. So Phil Morgan from Oric, Harrington and Sutcliffe. Oric is our Bond Counsel. Nancy Robles. Nancy, are you here? Hi, Nancy. She's from IBank, and IBank is our Bond Issuer. Greg Dolly. Greg is from RBC Capital Markets, and he's our Underwriter Representative. And of course, you have Mike Kramer next to me from Montague, DeRose and Associates as our Municipal Advisor, and Kevin Savali from Stradling, Yoka and Carlson and Roth as our Disclosure Council. And then we have Blake Fowler. Blake is representing the State Treasurer's Office, and the State Treasurer is our Agent for Sale. So thank you all for being here today. I really appreciate your assistance as we continue through this process together. Okay, so back to the resolutions that we have before you. The first one is a bond resolution. Now, this resolution officially authorizes us to issue the bonds. It also authorizes and directs the Chief Executive Officer or his designee to prepare, approve, execute and deliver, as applicable, all documents and actions necessary to complete the bond issuance process. It also authorizes the State Treasurer to act as our Agent for Sale, and that's pursuant to the Government Code. And it requires staff to come back to the Board and provide you with a copy of the preliminary official statement for your review and comment prior to the bond issuance. Now, the resolution itself includes certain parameters that staff must abide by during the issuance process, and Mr. Kramer will be discussing with you now what those restrictions are.
Good morning. So the bond resolution contains four parameters that will drive the financing team. The first is a limitation on the power amount, so that is a limitation of 350 million. There's a limitation on the true interest cost, which is the borrowing cost for Calsters. It's going to be set at 450. The term will be limited to a 30-year term of repayment, and the annual debt service in the resolution will be capped at 22.5 million per year. We have a table on page four of item three.
It's TRB 8.
That shows the current estimated sizing of the bonds on the middle column. And the sizing of the bonds and debt service is highly dependent on market conditions as to how the interest rates are set on the bonds, which determines the debt service payments. So using interest rate as of April 5th, the borrowing cost was a 365, and we are suggesting a not exceed of 450. This gives us an allowance of up to roughly 80 basis points higher to, should market conditions change between now and when we actually sell the bonds in early October. So that recent sizing has debt service estimated at 19.1 million per year. We're asking for a not exceed of 22.5 million. And we think this gives us adequate capacity to adjust for market conditions between now and when we sell. Should the market conditions change differently, we'd have to come back to the Board for reapproval, so we think this just a, gives us comfort that we have some wiggle room on the bond sizing.
Okay. So the second resolution, okay.
So that's a six-month period, right? We're in May now, is that right?
Five, probably five months.
Five months, really, from May to October. And so we anticipate, so the reason why we're making that assumption is because we think that the cost might change in that five months, that's why there's that.
The cost in terms of the debt service.
The debt service.
When we set the pricing on the bonds, which are the same as the lease payments.
Okay.
We just can't predict between now and five months from now where the mark's going to be. We're basing the sizing on current market conditions.
Okay.
Which are very favorable. In fact, since we ran these numbers a month ago, rates are roughly 0.2% lower than they were then. So conditions continue to improve, but...
I was just wondering how volatile, you know, it doesn't seem like a pretty volatile environment, so I just wondered how much change you could anticipate in the five-month period.
I wouldn't say the market's been very volatile, it's been improving, but I think the 75-basis-point cushion we've added should be adequate for us.
Okay.
For the five months.
Thanks.
And if it's not, we wanted to put in a parameter for you to know what's happening so that we could come back and get your further approval. Okay, so I'll move on to the second reimbursement resolution that's before you. If Calsters incurs hard costs more than 60 days prior to the bond issuance, we need a formal resolution in place to be able to reimburse ourselves 100% out of the bond proceeds, and that's pursuant to a Treasury regulation. Now, hard costs would be your building materials, your labor, you know, anything that goes into physically building that building, as opposed to soft costs, which would be like your architect costs, your engineering costs, your surveying costs. Those type of costs are exempted from the Treasury regulation, so we don't need a formal resolution to reimburse ourselves 100%. But, so this is just our declaration of intent that we may incur hard costs, which we probably will, and we will be reimbursing ourselves out of those bond proceeds. But to be clear, anytime we talk about hard or soft costs, it's any cost that's related to the $300 million total project budget that the Board has approved. So that's a quick summary of the two resolutions before you today, but before we conclude, I wanted to just mention a few things about green bonds. So as you're aware, Calsters' vision and guiding beliefs does support advancing sustainability. And if you look at the State of California Treasurer's website, they're also pledging to issue green bonds to build climate-friendly infrastructure. And so the Headquarters' Expansion is being designed to support sustainability by using green building practices, energy efficiency, sustainable construction and employee wellness goals. And so because we're doing all that, we believe that we would qualify for saying that our bonds are green and getting certification for green bonds. Now, we could just say, we think our bonds are green, but we feel it would be better to go to a third party who has standards to say what a green bond truly is. And we're pursuing certification through the Climate Bond Initiative. They set standards and issue certifications specifically for green bonds. But for full disclosure, I did want to mention that at CBI, they have two distinct boards. They have a Standards Board and they have a Certification Board. And Calsters and the State Treasurer does have a seat on the Standards Board side, and they work on guidance on standard setting for climate change initiatives. Now, once we get the certification, hopefully, we qualify, and we will have ongoing reporting obligations for that certification through the life of the bonds to ensure that we continue to meet certification. So our next steps would be, upon your approval today, we will continue to work with the financing team to get the bonds issued. We will keep the Board fully updated on our progress by providing monthly updates to the Board Oversight Committee, as well as providing the Board at every Board meeting until the bonds are issued and report through JAC CEO Report. And we will be back with you in July to provide you with a copy of the preliminary official statement so that you can review and provide any comments. So with that, do you have any questions for me or the financing team?
Nope.
Yes, I understand that there was approximately $8 million spent in soft costs prior by Calsters. Will that be recouped?
Well, we haven't completely spent the full 8 million yet, but yes, the answer's yes.
Thanks.
Oh, I'm sorry, Spenny. That's okay. I'm happy to be Lynn, any day. Thank you. I wanted to just ask with respect to action by the Board, is this the only action you'll need, is just the adoption of the two resolutions?
Correct.
Okay, and then anything else is, I mean, you built in a lot of flexibility with respect to not exceed provisions for the bond authorization interest and debt service, so I just wanted to be clear that this will be the only action the Board will take and will get updates.
It'll be the only official action. You will see the preliminary official statement, but that'll be more of a receive and file action.
Okay, good, thank you.
Thank you. So on the second resolution that we're adopting that'll allow us to reimburse ourselves for the hard costs incurred prior to 60 days, is that a typical practice or by, in this type of situation, to have to get that kind of approval?
I think I'll have...
Yes, it's very customary.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Are there any further questions? Seeing none, we have two resolutions. I'd like to take them one by one, if you don't mind. I'd entertain a motion to adopt the bond resolution. That's the adoption of the Headquarters' Expansion Financing.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Harry and seconded by Sharon. Are there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Any extensions? We've approved the bond financing. The second resolution is the adoption to reimburse certain expenditures from the proceeds of the indebtedness. Entertain a motion.
Move.
Moved by Karen. Seconded by Joy. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Any extensions? All right, we've passed that. Thank you.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna text Paul Rosensthal after this meeting and say, "Thank you."
We will put a note in that we didn't quite know what we were getting ourselves into, didn't you?
Thank you.
But that we do appreciate the suggestion.
I noticed he left us after, you know, before.
Yes, he did. All righty, we are going to recess and go into...
Can we start early? Benefits and Services? Can we start at 9:15?
Sure.
We could start early at Benefits and Services, right, Brian? Okay.
Subor...
I like starting early.
The Board is recessed.
So...
So we'll call the Board back into session. As y'all know, some of the pleasures of being Chair is signing the 100-year birthday letters. So we had 12 in June, and we had 11 in May. And every once in a while, we get letters back. I have to tell you, not too long ago, I got a letter back from a woman that actually lives in Sacramento who said, "Thank you so much for the SBMA." Between her pension and her SBMA, she could just about make her rent for the retired living situation that she's in. That was heartbreaking. But I want to read you one that I got recently, so. "On behalf of my mother..."
I told you.
I shouldn't even tried. "On behalf of my mother, thank you for the delightful letter honoring her 100th birthday. My mother married an Englishman many years ago and lives in England. I've had a wonderful celebration with family from all over attending. She received a card from the Queen, special delivery." So y'all, we do a pretty good job when we're competing with the Queen of England for birthday cards, so I wanted you to share that. All righty, Jack?
Does that mean she wasn't referring to you?
No, she wasn't referring to me. Wrong queen. All right. So Jack, we're gonna turn this over to you for the Annual Board Chair Election.
Sure, okay. All right, as you all know, per our policy, we have an annual election for the Chair of the Board and the Vice Chair. It's a one-year term, and we just do them separately. So I will entertain motions for the Chair of the Board for the coming year. Ms. Dylan?
I nominate Sharon Hendricks, please.
All right, we have a nomination of Sharon Hendricks for Chair of the Board. There was a second, and a second from Joy. All right, do we have any other motions? We have a motion to close the nominations, which is process. We have a motion from Mr. Keely to close the nominations. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? You are elected unanimously. Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you.
Big changer of the system. Do we have nominations for the Vice Chair of the Board for the coming year? Ms. Dylan, again.
Harry Keely, please.
Mr. Keely.
I second.
And a second by Ms. Yamamoto. Any other motions for Vice Chair? Could we have a motion to close the... A motion by Ms. Hendricks. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations, Mr. Keely. All right. And then a little different this year, we do the committee assignments at the same time, and our new Chair, we'll have to run up there and change the signs. Our new Chair will handle the committee composition, and we'll need a motion to adopt the composition for the coming year. But again, for our new Board members, remember, it's a pretty flexible environment around committee assignments. If things work or don't work for your schedules, just tell the new Chair.
Great. So we just, we had a couple of changes, and so we need to approve the committee assignments, and so I verbally need to make some of these changes. And feel free, committee members, if you have changes. A couple people have notified to me. So Joy has asked to be removed from Board Governance and be added to the Comp Committee. And then Nora Vargas has been, I think she was added to the Compensation Committee, and somehow we didn't have her on there, so Nora's added a comp. A comp is getting very popular, very exciting. So Joy and Nora added a comp, Joy removed from Board Governance. Those are the only changes I have for this next year. Any other changes? Last minute? Other than that, I would entertain a motion to approve the Board Committee for 1920.
So moved, second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? It is adopted. Great, thank you. Now that we have the business out of the way... Dana, you like... Where's the Kleenex, Cassandra? Where's the Kleenex? It's challenging to like, this is a challenging... Yeah, we need a bigger box. It's, first of all, it's an honor, and I just, I'm so grateful to the Board and to previous Board members, the honor to serve as the Chair of this Board. It is such an esteemed Board, and I have to say, it's really, I credit you to that, Dana. You, it's funny, I met you eight years ago, and I didn't know what the heck I was doing on this Board. And I don't know, you just, you are a unique individual. Anyone who knows Dana, she just grows on you. There's this part, there's this, you know? You meet her... It's just, it's just so interesting because you're a person that, the strengths just come out in such unique ways and different interactions that we've had over the years. And I think especially, I would say, you know, you've been so active with CTA, and so at times in our relationship in the last eight years, you've been busy doing a lot of different things. But I would say, in the last two years in particular, as Chair and Vice Chair, we've worked so closely together on founding Trustees United and doing really exciting work. Really good stuff, that's important. And I think that's advocating for workers and sexual harassment and misconduct and making sure that companies behave better. And I just appreciate that we have so many shared values, and so you've been a real sister to me and a real mentor to me, and I can only hope to carry on the legacy of the leadership that you've had of this Board. And it's just a pleasure to lead in a place where I feel like I have colleagues that I trust and respect and enjoy being with, that make me laugh and that make me think and that challenge me and make me a better person and a better leader. So I just want to say, thank you, and I can only hope to, I will not fill your shoes, but I want to continue the legacy that you, I think, have led us in, and that is collegiality, rigorous discussion, respect, and also to always remember that it's about the teachers. It's about California teachers, so thank you for your leadership.
Thank you.
And I know, I'm not the only one that wants to say stuff, so we're gonna let other people say things too, so we're gonna take some time, because this is really important, because you've been on this Board 16 years. But we wanted to give you, and this is on behalf of all of us, this lovely apple that just demonstrates just how much we really appreciate everything that you've done, your service for 16 years for the teachers of California. So thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. So anyway, so the mic is open. Do you want to say comments now, or you want to wait?
I'll wait.
Okay. So let's, I feel like we're at a wedding right now. Or a roast. I think our new Vice Chair would like to say a few comments about Madam Chair. You will always be Madam Chair, by the way, so if I say that, I recognize it, you know...
And I have to click him in.
Yeah, click him in.
Madam Chair, I love the way you roll. I love the way Dana Dillon rolls.
I'm gonna roll with you.
You've been an incredible, incredible Chair of this Board for so many years, Dana. Unparalleled leadership, unparalleled leadership. And, you know, it's not goodbye, because you're with us through December 31st.
Yeah, I get to be, I'm the member of the system, I'm around here for a long time.
But you have, you're passing, you're passing the gavel. You have served hundreds of thousands of teachers and their families. Been a leader in the California Teachers Association, you've been elected to this Board five times or four times. You're a teacher from Weed, California. And I didn't know Dana Dillon 12 years ago.
Yeah.
And I walked off the DIAS, and we just gave a presentation, and this woman approached me, and she said, "Do you know who I am?" And I'm a kid from New York, you know, I'm not from Weed. Like, "No, I don't know you." And we had a conversation, and little did I know at that time how enriched my life would become by meeting you. And you've been... You have a legacy, man. You're a legacy. You've lived a life of purpose. You've made a difference.
Thank you.
And we won't get into the details, but you were there. You were there at a time when I needed someone to be there, and for that, I will forever, forever be grateful. I love you in the depths of my heart, Dana. You've been an incredible, incredible leader. And who would ever have thought a woman from Weed would meet a guy from Queens? And we'd have a little bit of a bromance.
That's this man.
You've taught me a lot. I love you so much, Dana.
This is our box, sorry, I gotta get around.
It's probably been empty by the time we're done.
Which one?
Oh, Karen. Karen. Okay. Well, I've only been on the Board for two years, but I've known about Dana all of my teaching career, and I would see her name, voting for her as an active member, as an active teacher, so, but I never really knew too much about her daily life. I never watched the videos, I never saw her, but she was always there. I mean, every time anything came up about teaching and about Calsters, the big word Dana was always there. She's been a mentor these past few years for me, and I really appreciate your friendship, your love, your concern for all that I needed to know. I, as a struggling Board Member, I mean, there's so much to learn, right, Bill? There's so much to learn. And, you know, everybody is still learning, and the most exciting thing for me was to be seated next to you during these last two years. You know, I got to, I got to watch you, I got to hear you, I got to see how you, how you, how you project yourself, how you care, what your passions are. And most of all, you know, just your little idiosyncrasies that you have, you know? We got mints around here somewhere. The mints, the jerky, the Kleenex, the water, the coffee.
The grammar correction.
The grammar corrections, and then, you know, so luckily, I get to do that too now that, you know, after December. Exactly. So anyway, so I have, I have a little presentation to give you, just, just to kind of, it's kind of a funny thing, it's kind of a funny thing, but I wanted to commemorate the, all the mints that she eats. And this is in friendship, this is in friendship. Absolutely. So that you will never be without mints. Okay, so you guys show, you guys show up your bags.
And here's my bag.
Karen has hers here, too. See, Chris can remember when it was raw spaghetti. And his investment team upstairs thought I was actually chewing on teeth picks, but it was actually raw spaghetti. Oh, wow. Thank you. Frank. Frank, thank you.
Well, Madam Chair, first and foremost, I'm not going to repeat, because we only, I've only known you, what, four months? But on behalf of the Treasurer and on behalf of Fiona Mount, thank you. Thank you for your service to our kids, to our community, and thank you for your service to the Board. She is, she wants to make sure, you know, that she sends her best wishes. And on a personal note, I wanted to thank you because from day one, not knowing you, you made me feel so comfortable and took the time. I was truly impressed and took the time to say, Frank, you need, you called me and you actually were there to guide me, you know, to try to understand what is my role and what I'm doing, and I cannot say thank you enough.
Thank you. Oh, dear. Patty.
Thank you, Dana. I think many of you know, I, in my capacity as Controller, serve on over 70 Boards and Commissions. And part of the joy of really personally being able to come here and to serve is, as we've talked about a lot, the culture of this organization. And it really is set, that tone is set really at all levels. And Dana, you have, I think, really exemplified just how you can carry out a mission with such passion and care. And I can only imagine what it must be like to be a student in one of your classrooms.
They probably don't appreciate it.
No, I have a sense that that comes through also in the classroom. But what I really just appreciate about you is just your authenticity. I mean, the Dana that we know, I know is also the Dana that the rest of the world knows. And can't thank you enough for your leadership, really elevating for me, I think, why we are doing well as a Board, is the importance of Board Governance and really understanding, you know, our responsibilities as a Board, as fiduciaries. And lastly, I will say, just your style of leadership that I know is going to be passed on, because I know Sharon and Harry, and Harry share this, but the spirit of being inclusive and being sure that when we are serving, that we are all fully participating, and you really do encourage that. So my personal thanks, and my team thanks you, and really, I'm very, very grateful.
Thank you. So I just want to say thank you. Thank you for everything that you've done for all of us, and I think, well, I'm not looking at you because I don't want to cry, and so... Because I cry all the time. But I think that one of my favorite things about you, serving on this Board, this could be a very intimidating word, and I joined in 2015, and I, part of me was like, oh my gosh, their responsibility is so great, and I think my favorite...
And I think my favorite part about you is really encouraging us to be human. I think sometimes when you serve on these types of boards and you have so much responsibility, you know, you do so much for so many people, it's hard to remember why we're here. And I think, you know, giving us permission to, you know, cry, to really believe, to have that commitment and that passion is very unique to your leadership style. And I think that if we had more and more corporate boards, I think the world would be very different. So thank you for your leadership, thank you for your support, and thank you for making us go to baseball games.
Fun, have fun.
Because kind of, it was a little bit of making us go to them at the beginning because, I mean, everybody's tired and everybody's doing so many things. But I think that camaraderie really allows us to continue to build trust and be able to really, you know, as part of board governance, to understand that we may not agree on everything all the time, but that there is, you know, a commitment for our teachers and, and you certainly really, I mean, you really are an exceptional human being. And I will absolutely come to a country music festival to see you soon. Because that's, that's one of my favorite things that I have in common with you.
There you go, absolutely.
So thank you for everything you do.
Thank you. Joy?
Got my Kleenex ready. So I just want to also, you know, don't want to repeat what a lot of people have said because I agree wholeheartedly with all the sentiments that have been expressed. You know, some of you may know that I had the privilege of representing one of our former Controllers on the board back in the early 2000s. And Dana was a relatively new board member back then. When I then had the honor of being appointed to the board in 2013 or 14, Dana was, was here. And, you know, the, the, the way that you interact with the board members, the way that you understand our issues and the way that you remember our mission, I think has been, has been then and continues to be really vital to seeing the board and the fund through so many of the transitions that we have gone through and that we're still going through right now, you know, with new representatives and new onboard members. And, you know, you, you, you have been a lot of the glue that has continued things running as well as they have been and to keep the board discussions as, as collegial and constructive and, I think, genuine as they have been. So I thank you for all of that. And just your, your leadership has, I think, has helped me become a better leader myself, a better board member and a better mom. Thank you.
Bill?
I've known Dana for less than a month. But, but I've had more hugs in that month. You are.
There you go.
You're terrific.
Thank you.
And I gotta say, I'm sad that I only have six months with you.
Yeah. Thank you.
You've been great.
Thank you.
I look forward to the next six months.
I do too.
Yeah, that's very sweet.
You know, y'all don't have to say something.
This is not an official statement, but a personal one, but even on the short time that, that I've been able to represent the Superintendent on this, on this board, I wanted to observe the, the, the way that you've allowed this board to operate is in the consistent with the ideals of public service and openness of government within the responsibilities that you're, the fiduciary responsibilities of this board and what's appropriate and not appropriate to, to handle. And that is something that's very admirable. It is something that many people strive to, when they get appointed and become Chair, strive to attain. But to say that, I think that in practice, that you've been able to get us there is, one of your great, you know, great accomplishments. So thank you for that in, in the interests of the public that at least we perceive. Thank you.
I appreciate it.
I can go ahead and field the, do you want me to field the folks in the public?
Sure.
So, from members of the public, Denise?
Hello, Denise Bradford, Chair of CTA Retirement Committee. Dana, on behalf of our committee and CTA, I just wanted to say thank you for everything that you've done for us as Chair as well. We appreciate all of your attendance at all of our meetings and always being willing to talk to every single person who wants to talk individually. We know that it's taken a lot of your time and energy and we sincerely appreciate it. On a personal note, thank you for raising me through the Retirement Committee.
Absolutely.
And teaching me how to wordsmith until the words are absolutely perfect. I'm sure many of you have been through that exercise and we love you for it and thank you for everything that you've done.
Thank you.
It's a pleasure to have somebody representing the northern part of the state and the average teacher. You know, so often we cluster around people from this particular area and we talk to ourselves and we don't look outside. And you've been able to do that and that will be very much missed.
Thank you, Pastor.
Thanks, Pat.
Maggie?
Maggie Ellis, Teacher Leader, Elk Grove Education Association. Well, I brought a box of Kleenex, but I had to get into it because I had allergies all week, so you're not getting my box this week. I can't even remember how long we've known each other. You have raised me through State Council, through Retirement Committee, through liaison here as a local leader. A few years ago, I, I said I wanted to grow up to be Dana. And it wasn't to take your position here because I got, I got plenty to do in Elk Grove. But what I meant by that is to be you is to be a passionate advocate, to treat people as people, to see them, to see their needs, their values, their challenges, their wants, their desires. To never see someone as an obstacle or as irrelevant or as a vehicle to get what you need. You have been a fiduciary of both CTA and Cal Stirs and sometimes that puts you in conflict. But you did it to the highest integrity that we could ever expect from someone. You have led this, this board with an integrity that it, it's hard for everybody to meet your standard because you, you are a unique individual who I am proud to say is a teacher because you've never lost that connection to teachers, whether they're active or retirees. You are our advocate, you will always be our advocate. And I expect you to be watching those board meetings when you, at some point in time, like I do, and you'll be sitting in these seats, ready to.
I'll come hang out with you when I'm on my birthday.
Exactly. You're ready to give praise when you need to give praise and you're ready to kick some butt when you need to kick some butt.
That's right, that's right.
So, more power to you. Enjoy.
So glad you came, Maggie. Loretta?
Loretta? I better take this off. Loretta Taggamberger, United Teachers Los Angeles, retired. Dana, the first time I met you was at a CTA meeting and you were changing from a skirt to pants and said, "I'm from Weed, I'm a country girl from Weed." And I had, and I thought, ooh, who is this? And so now, fast forward. It's time to have an election. I mean, you know, we've been through a lot of elections and it was for the Vice Chair of the Retirement Committee of CTA. And I said, "Dana, run." Well, you said, "Well, I'm only in my 30s, I'm too young." I said, "No, we need you." You ran, you were Vice Chair, Chair, and then you came moving on when it came time to run for the Cal Stirs. So, what we do, we all backed you. Dana, it was because of how you treated everybody, it was because of all your care. You're, you're a teacher and teachers never die, they just keep moving on. And let me tell you, you're going to move on. We sure appreciate, thank you, thank you, thank you for all the years. And I can't tell all the good times we've had besides the work.
You're not going to say anything about Mexico?
We had, we had some really.
This is webcast, okay, let's keep it.
Good ones. Down in Mexico, we've had places, and I went to one of the first, I was still a trustee for LA Unified, and you came as a brand new trustee and everybody wanted to meet the new board member from Cal Stirs. Well, I knew her, well, was I popular because of you? And from there on, you have moved on. Just you have done everything the right way, even the crying, which we know, which is part of you. And Dana, thank you, thank you again.
Thank you, Loretta, I love you.
Mr. Folia?
Yeah. Hey, Folia, CTA NA Retired. I am so proud of you and what you have accomplished. I am very fortunate because I was also a constituent of yours when you are, were our board member representing most of Northern California. And at the time that I recycled back into CTA, you were one of the first to reach out and welcome me back. And you did it in such a classy way. The thing that I am most impressed with is that many people that achieve what you have achieved seem to forget their roots. But you have never forgotten your roots. You are a classroom teacher, but you are a shining example of the talent we have among our constituencies. And you have been a role model. And what you've achieved is not sort of say, "Well, look, she was there." You have worked very hard to make sure that unfunded liability was taken care of. And you persisted and you represented us. So, the thing that I can look back, as I look back on my years with CTA and here at Cal Stirs, is that I've had a tremendous relationship with a wonderful person and you were just there all the time. And you, even though sometimes you probably maybe were annoyed with some of the things I was doing, you, you were patient and you treated me so well. Thank you very, very much.
Melanie?
Hey Dana. I don't, Melanie Myers with the American Federation of Teachers. I don't normally come to the mic and I would normally just deliver these comments to you, but I'm so inspired by all the voices here, I just couldn't, couldn't stay quiet. I just, I just want to say it's been such a pleasure to get to know you over the last couple of years. I have, I work with a lot of teacher trustees all over the US in, in my role and, and you are one of my favorite. Honestly, you are, you know, other commenters have, have talked about what a great role model you are to other board members. I, I want to expand on that because I think the, the leadership that you show as a, as a, oh, I'm going to get teared up too. As an elected trustee on the board, as an elected leader, as a woman, I just, I think that the passion and authenticity that you bring to it, including the tears and especially the tears, I mean, you, you bring your whole heart to this as well as your brilliant mind and your strategy. And all of that, I think, is, is an inspiration, not just to the board members here, but to lots of women all over who are looking at, you know, positions of leadership. So, thank you. From, from my heart.
Thank you.
Sharon, you have big shoes to fill, but we'll be there to support you.
I do, but you're going to help. Do you want to say a few words, Dana?
Could I just jump in there too?
Oh, sure, absolutely.
I'd love to say something on behalf of all of Cal Stirs, Dana. And obviously today's about leadership, we'll, we'll have another goodbye at the end of the year when you retire. You know, I'm a, I'm a big fan of the Harvard Business Review, they do lots of studies and articles on leadership all the time. And, and I think for all of us that work in a business, we realize there is a, there's a difference between academic studies of leadership and what it means to really work in an organization, finding out how, how you navigate. One day 25th sixth graders, the next day difficult investment decisions and also making sure that people's pensions are taken care of. The, the, the view, the landscape here is as complicated a landscape as any a business will find. And I would challenge the Harvard Business Review to do a study of you. Because you do bring things that are not always evidenced in, in some of the academic perspectives on leadership that really make it work well in an environment just as complicated as this is with our stakeholders and, and, and the legislature and the leadership and the policy issues and all the things that we have to tackle while we do. When, when I think about, you know, our annual present, our annual educational item on being a fiduciary, the word that jumps out for you always is loyalty. You are fiercely loyal to the system. And, you know, again, we can give you all the legal lectures we, we want, but not everyone brings that innately in them to the table about that fierce loyalty and put on blinders to other things that would affect other people's decision-making. But you somehow naturally bring to the table having that unique, that, that unitary focus on the membership that we want everyone to have being a fiduciary. You and I probably talk every day for years now in what we do and we know each other so well, but always know where you are in terms of supporting the staff, supporting the organization, supporting the mission and supporting the teachers, that's our job. So, you're an incredible leader for us, thank you.
And I know I'm standing between us and lunch. Or no, audits, right?
I think we're going to break for lunch after this. There's no rush, you take your time.
You have all filled my heart so much. And I can probably say a lot, but it just really boils down to, it's, it's my honor. It's about my honor to serve. And I thank all of you for that opportunity. Because then I go scream and cry. It's a bit bad.
All right, that concludes item four. Let's take a five-minute break and I'll come for what Joy to see. Do you, do you want to, do you want to just go ahead and do audits in five minutes? Let's take a five-minute break, yeah. Five-minute break and then we'll do audits and then we'll do lunch after audits.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.